Came here in 1986 to run it for myself in October. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Find that balance between doing what you love that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and, more importantly, can resonate with people and actually, to some extent, help people. That's pretty rewarding. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
I'm going to call this meeting for order. Calls actually being late. Asking everybody to silence their cellphones if they haven't already. And we'll begin with roll call, please.
Ray Karen?
Yeah, Ken Fletcher?
Here.
Jerry Kirian?
Here.
Steve Russell?
Yeah.
Ben Tuchel?
Jeff West?
Here.
Patricia West?
Here.
I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from this meeting. Is there a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Hold same sign. Communications, we have legislative report. And doesn't feel like she's here, she knocked, been waiting up after this. We'll go now with a public comment on anything that anybody from the public would like to address the town council on. You're welcome to step up to the microphone and make your case. If you would please state your name and address.
My name is Bill Sodolsky. My address is Quimby Lane, Winslow. I'd like to clarification on the snow removal policy. We have an ordinance that says 6:00 a.m. in the morning till 10:00 a.m. at night for equipment running. I see people all over the place at 5:00, 4:00, 5:00, 3:00 in the morning out plowing snow. What's the right legal way?
Are you talking about town plows?
No.
Private?
Yes.
Plows? I guess I wasn't aware we had the ordinance for private plows.
No, we don't.
We don't?
No. For some emergencies, or snow emergencies, then, you know, folks can do what they need to do to clear the snow. There's no restriction on that.
So apparently, there's no restriction on plows?
So you can plow snow anytime?
Private citizens?
Yes. Well, I mean commercially, I have an apartment house, I have to plow out.
Yep. Whenever it's needed, you can do that, yep.
Can you put that on a police department letterhead and mail it to me?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Go ahead, yep.
I could put that on town letterhead.
Our town letterhead, be okay?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Is that more related to actual snow removal?
Kyle Price, 147 Clinton Avenue. And I just wanted to offer some thoughts on your, item number seven on your agenda, resolution number 41-2017, which you'll be talking about the amount to look at the building renovation project. And I just felt that I needed to take an opportunity to share some things that I'd like the council to know about in terms of what will be needed in the future. I hear some folks talk about, opening up the discussion again, about a pre-K-8 option. And I want to stress the pre-K, we have had a four-year program in our school since 2007. So I think it's important that we identify ourselves as a pre-K through five school at this particular point in time. Our enrollment numbers at the school are currently higher than numbers that I've heard used at these meetings. We currently have 476 students in our pre-K through five program. The plan that included the grade six to reside in the current structure of that building does not leave any room for growth. So I'm a little concerned about what would happen if we don't take some consideration into that, or we have a good, clear picture of where not growth is something that we need to consider. We would be tight and could do it under the current structure. But if for some reason anybody, and we're seeing some growth come in, we've had more students enroll with us this year than we've had leave. There will still be the same programming needs for the six through eight population, regardless of whether they go to the height. Or a capitorium, or a performing arts center, we've had three concerts last week that we filled the gym with more than 500 people for all three of those. And those were two-grade concerts. We had a K-1 concert, a 2-3 concert, and then a 4-5 concert. We would still have gymnasium needs, considering that our school and town utilize our school facilities with the products and rec. And next month, our school turns 25 years old. It was occupied in January of 1993. I've seen some paperwork that suggested that it was a 40- to 50-year build.
Any further comments from the public on any subject they wish to speak about, please? Go ahead. Can you state your name, please?
Jack Niverson, 21 Kitten Award. Is this the time, looking at the agenda, that the public input relative to that ordinance when it comes up, coming up with some kind of figure? Is this going to be the only time the public will...
Will that require a second reading?
Also, the public input at the time that that comes up, so I've got a couple of questions.
No second reading?
Get a chance to ask them.
I guess you could ask your question now, because as a resolution, we will not be having a second reading and a public hearing on it. So if you wish to speak for a couple of minutes on the subject, you're welcome to.
Okay.
It'd be easier for everybody if you went to the microphone, I think, yeah. Please.
Towards the end of November, that's a question I have to start with, is that whatever the exact date was of the last public meeting related to the bond issue, okay? That was after it was defeated, last part of November, I think, the meeting at the junior high. At the end of that meeting, I remember that the chairman of the school board, Ron Wery, and I don't know who he was talking with directly as one of the councils that were there, that they were going to, they agreed to have a workshop session together involving the school board and the town council. And that has taken place, I assume.
Yes, it has.
And they were going to try to work out some kind of deal or compromise to come back to.
Yes.
I guess what I would like to know is, can somebody tell me, whether it be school board member, or council member, or one of each, what came out of that workshop meeting between the council and the school committee? Can somebody give me a synopsis or anything specific once that meeting was adjourned?
I can try real quick, and someone can correct me and step in if I misspeak. That led to this resolution that was, that we're talking to tonight. And what was decided was there was no sense for the school board or the school building to continue without some sort of guidance from the council as to what it would take, for lack of a better term, a unanimous decision by the council to put it on a ballot. And so I guess the point was that we will come together tonight and try to come up with a dollar figure of what most of us would accept as the next bond referendum for the figure. And for me, they will then go back and take that number and work out a program, a plan for proceeding with that number in mind. And they will try to stay within that. If they can't, they can come back to us and ask for more at the, at appropriate time. But we will try to hold them to that number that we come up with tonight. Am I saying that accurately? I'm trying to clarify. Would you want to add something, Ray?
Well, I would just add that, not to get into discussion on resolution number seven, but in the past, when, you know, if you hear something during, when we're discussing, you can always raise your hand, and then the council chair can recognize you or not recognize you at that point in time. So just because if you don't, if you have something else that you hear during the discussion that you want to comment on, please don't hesitate to raise your hand. And I think we've been pretty, as long as it's been respectful, pretty...
I would agree with that, especially where a case like this, where we won't be having a second reading and a public, and a public hearing on it, that would probably go through, especially tonight.
Yeah, yeah. So don't, don't think that this is your last chance to talk about this thing tonight.
Okay.
Those possibilities.
And this was generally agreed to, through the council, with the council and the school board, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
And if you have more questions or want to discuss in it, feel free to raise your hand. Okay.
Anybody else like to speak? If not, we'll move on to the rest of our meeting agenda, and we'll start with appointments. And the first one is to reappoint Sean O'Wery to the safety committee.
Motion on that? Second.
Moved and seconded to appoint Sean O'Wery. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. And now we move on to reports of committees and commissions, and we will begin with the town manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, the only item I mention in my report on these questions is that Alanco was still interested in acquiring Kenneth Esco and Drive so that they can put up a gate to better secure their facility. And they're hoping perhaps to have all the information here for our January council meeting. And that's all I have.
Okay, so you think there will be a proposal from them in January?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions to the town manager concerning his report? If not, we'll move on, department reports. Any questions? And we have the finance report and the financial committee, finance committee report, treasurer's warrants. If there are any discussions on any of those reports? If not, I entertain a motion to accept all reports as ordered.
Sorry.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting the reports, please raise your right hand, hold same sign, pass the manus. Move on to unfinished business. Order number 17, 2017, providing for the sale of tax-acquired property. This is the second reading. What is your pleasure? Moved and seconded, any discussion? We discussed this last time, right? Okay, before I'll set the vote, is this a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Ben Tuchel?
Yeah.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. Moving on to new business, beginning with ordinance number 14, 2017. Providing for an amendment to the Winslow zoning map to rezone the entire lot owned by Gloria Vayu on tax map 16, Lot 34, 55 China Road, from the high-density residential district to a mixed-use district. Be amended by town council. The town of Winslow asks follows, whereas Gloria Vayu owns a lot in the town of Winslow shown on the town of Winslow tax map 16, Lot 34, which is located in the high-density residential district. This law borders the mixed-use district, and whereas Ms. Vayu wishes to have her property rezoned to be included in the mixed-use district, and whereas the Winslow planning board recommends this parcel located on map 16, Lot 34, be rezoned by extending the mixed-use district to include this entire parcel. Now therefore, be amended by town council that such property owned by Gloria Vayu on tax map 16, Lot 34, 55 China Road, be rezoned as mixed-use district, and the Winslow zoning map be so amended.
So...
Moved?
Moved.
Moved and seconded, open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would we be sending out notices to the abutters so that they would be aware of this?
I would think so. We have our coenforcement here, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, yeah, we would.
You will send out notices between the first and second reading?
And also, you're going to have a public...
Public hearing next meeting?
Yeah.
Yep. So people would have a chance to speak at that point, as long as they're notified of this prior, then they would have an opportunity.
Is this a typo, is one reading there?
I'm assuming this is two readings, right? Yeah, two readings with a public hearing next month. Okay, would you like to speak? If you'd like to come up to the microphone, please, and identify yourself.
Chris Vayu, 66 Clinton Ave. I do have, my mother is Gloria. I do have two of the abutters who have signed paperwork, the immediate abutters, saying that they are in agreeance, and that would like it rezoned to mixed use as well.
Yep.
So, I don't know if that helps you.
Yep.
Okay.
We'd like to make sure neighbors are happy whenever we change the... Okay, excellent.
Could I have a question?
Sure.
Do you think that they would want their property, since it borders on the China Road, as rezoned for mixed use? Or if we're doing one rezoning, I mean, does it make sense for...
It would, correct, yeah. 65 China Road, which is the abutte right to the left, and then 4 Cushman Road, which is right on the corner, right across from the mini-mall, those are the two abutters that I have signatures from that are in agreeance to having it rezoned to mixed use.
For your parcel?
As well.
They'd agree that your parcel...
No, they've agreed to theirs as well.
That they would like it as mixed use?
Yes, correct.
Oh, I see.
Correct, all three properties, because we discussed that at the planning board meeting, that it would make sense to have those three properties since it completes that full corner, corner lot.
I just was wondering about 22, 31. 31 would be, the front of the house would be on Belanger Street, I would imagine, same thing as 32, right? They would be Belanger Street. So I guess, so you're saying, okay, so that would fulfill that corner.
Correct.
Right, you're absolutely right.
Yep.
Have the other two property owners requested that if we change, or I mean, would it make sense to change it all at that same time if they're in agreeance?
Yeah.
And the planning board discussed that, I assume?
I don't know.
We did. And that's why I got these signatures.
They hadn't requested it, so I don't...
But you haven't heard from the two abutters yet requesting this?
Not specifically, but he's got the letter there, and so...
So it's possible that at the second reading, we would want to amend this ordinance to include more parcels? Is that a possibility?
Can we amend it now?
You can.
I suppose we could, yeah.
Notify their...
Yeah, that's just...
Yeah, the abutters would want to be notified also.
Then have an increase in the abutters, that's the only thing.
Yep, yep. I have no problem with it, as long as all the neighbors are happy with the decision. Yes, Ken?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Which ones are we talking about, the abutters, to change them as well? Which, which lots?
33 and 36. They are 34, the Vayus.
So one on each immediate side of it?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, 36 faces the Cushman Road, 33 faces the China Road.
All right, I see, okay.
So the question is, do we amend it tonight or wait to make the amendment when we hear from the abutters? What's your pleasure? You guys are going to have to decide.
I make a motion to amend the ordinance to include Lot 36 and Lot 33.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion on the amendment? Go ahead, Ray.
Is, you know, the reason why you're doing this, is there any need to hurry? Are you trying to sell your property at this point in time, or...
Not immediately, but I mean, there was some, not a two-year process, I would hope, or one-year process.
No, it might be an extra month as well.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, that's, that's fine. There's no immediate urgency.
We want to make sure that the abutters get notified.
Correct, yeah, yeah, that's...
And that's what I think will, you know, I would probably, instead of amending it now, is be more to get our paperwork in order so that, you know, it's not just a letter, but some, some little more formal...
Does the planning board need... Did the planning board discuss ad neet to the lot, you know?
I don't believe so.
They were just discussing this one?
They knew that they were in favor of it, but they didn't specifically request the change.
Yes. I'm Gary Allen, planning board member.
Okay.
We did discuss this. But as a matter of course, if it makes sense for it to go back to the planning board to be, you want to adjust or amend this to include those other two properties and have it come before the board. Now that can happen, if the planning board meets the first Monday of the month, in January. It'll be the first Tuesday of this year, because who knows? But it would seem to me, if you're going to do this and make that adjustment, that you would bring it to the planning board for a cursory review.
Yes.
I was under the impression we did that the last time, when we had the map out, and everyone was in agreeance of changing all three properties versus one.
So the planning board should get a letter, you're saying, from the two abutters?
No, he has a...
He has a letter.
That was, yeah, that was discussed for when we come to this meeting, that everyone would be briefed knowing that the two immediate abutters would be notified, and if they're in agreeance, to kind of move on with the process. That's, yeah, I'm not sure what else we would discuss.
But it wouldn't actually delay the process anymore and allow the planning board to weigh in, right? Wouldn't necessarily, they're going to meet before our next meeting, and so they could discuss this before the second reading and weigh in on it, right?
We did have quite the discussion the first time around, I'm not sure what else we would discuss.
Yes.
You're going to have to give a public notice so that they have a public hearing on this, if you're going to be considering more than the property that's before you tonight, and I think your public notice is going to have to include those other properties, or else that could end up delaying things.
That's why we're making the change tonight, and then you can notify the abutters and it can, instead of waiting.
That's the process that I was, I believe, were under last time, is we notify, send out notifications to all the immediate abutters, and then have a public hearing.
In the public, we disagree, agree sometime on different issues, obviously. I think when Gary mentioned that it needs to go back, that's what we have a planning board for, and that's why they meet, and for the council to start amending, you know what I mean, for, for mixed zoning, it seems to me circum, circumnaggregates the planning boards, so we should use the planning board for what they should be. It might be a little inconvenient to take a little longer, but it's just, that's just my feeling, because we, you know, we seem to have a little difference of opinion here, where you're going to err, err to the side of using the boards that you have, and, you know, that's just the way things go. If it's a month, then...
And possibly, the abutters will be able to go to the planning board meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do we keep records from the planning board meetings? Because I believe at the end of that planning board meeting, we truly discussed letting the council know that all, that these three properties were proposed to change. When everyone voted, they were voting on the proposal of changing these three.
Well, that's not the communication, that's not the communication we received from the planning board, whether or not, what their official vote was, I don't know, I'd have to see the minutes, but this is what we got from the planning board, was this one property.
Can I ask Gary a question?
Go ahead, yes.
Gary, can I ask you a question? Since you did discuss the two abutters, and they do have a letter that signed off on, what else would you then have to discuss?
Like, all of those things are true, but as far as the proper way to do this, it should come to the planning board again for a motion and approval and a vote to, to do this. In fact, I suggested that at the meeting, that we do that, and it was tabled, or not tabled, but it was, it was left at single, the single lot. I don't see any issue with doing it, certainly, and I'm not the chairman of the board, but I think from a practical point of view, it makes sense to do, grab all the eyes across all the things, and you're not losing anything in time-wise, but you do need to let the people know that the other two abutters and the abutters of those, to be in part of that decision-making process.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to amend this ordinance, proposed ordinance. Is there any more discussion on this motion before we vote on it?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before you take that vote?
Okay.
So if you amend it to include the other two lots, then we can still send it back to the planning board for their opinion, which you would have at your next meeting before you take your final vote. So when you go to take your final vote, not only will we have the opportunity to hear from the public or the abutters, you'll also have the pleasure of hearing from the planning board, so...
So we're putting, we're taking the planning board out of the initial change, basically?
No, what I'm suggesting is, is you can do the first reading with the amendment, send it to the planning board for their input, and you can, you'll have the planning board input at your next meeting, and you'll have the public there to comment at your next meeting. So before you take, before you take your final vote, you'll have input from the public and the planning board.
And it doesn't delay everything a lot?
And it doesn't delay, but for whatever reason, if something comes up that you're uncomfortable with and feel, might be a little more time, you can always table it and take whatever further action feels appropriate. But I just, that's a possibility.
And whichever way you go, I just think it's important that the notice to the public is going to mention that there are three parcels in law, not just one, or else the public hasn't been completely notified of the proposed zoning change.
Because they were only notified of this, as far as that went.
Right.
That this was on the agenda, that's the only notification they've got.
Come on, come on, Gloria's, she's the owner of, do you have a question?
If you would step up to the microphone, please, and state your name.
Hi, I'm Gloria Vayu. I guess my concern is just my property, to be honest. But I thought it would be easier if we got the other two, because if it does sell commercial, it's going to be obviously easier if the whole corner is mixed use. Yeah, mixed use. So my question is, should I worry about the other two, or just worry about me?
I don't know, because I wasn't anticipating this. I was anticipating this ordinance.
Part of the discussion on the planning board was that, you know, they didn't show up and request it, so we just went forward with the one.
We knew in the back of our minds that they would, they would agree, so that's why we got the signature.
I mean, in the future, if they want to come and request it, then so we have...
We could do that, no?
And just approve this part of the agreement.
But if they didn't want it, why'd they sign the letter, so you didn't have to...
Right.
I think it's just about a thing that they're okay with it, or is it a question that they need changed?
Yes.
It's saying that they are in full agreements of having their property being rezoned from high-density residential mixed use.
But it hasn't been requested by them. They're okay with it, but they haven't been requested.
I'm going to leave it up to you guys as the council, but we have an amendment to this, to vote on. Go ahead, Ray. Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would say offhand that we would, I would vote no on this certain amendment to include the other two lots. We have an amendment in front of us for the one lot, which makes a very valid point that we can address that issue tonight. And then in the future, if the other two lots want to come in and do it, we can address the other two lots at some other time, but this takes care of that, that, that right now. And I think that's the way I would vote. And then if we have any questions, you know what I mean, with your lot and the other two lots, at the next meeting, we could do some work and...
with your lot and the other two lots, at the next meeting, we could do some work and figure something out. It still goes to, still goes to the planning board for the other two lots in due process, so. That's what I would do, is to, I would vote no on this amendment, and then bring the original amendment back and vote on the original amendment. That's what I would do.
Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on the proposed amendment.
Ray Karen?
No.
Ken Fletcher?
No.
Jeff West?
No.
Patricia West?
No.
Ben Twitchell?
No.
Jerry Kirian?
No.
Steve Russell?
No. So, that leads us back to the original ordinance as proposed. To rezone the one lot owned by Gloria Baye. Any further discussion on the ordinance on the table? If not, we'll have a roll call vote on ordinance fourteen, two thousand seventeen.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the first reading. There will be a second reading with a public hearing, and all butters will be notified. Moving on to ordinance number fifteen, two thousand seventeen. Providing for amendment to chapter fourteen, article six, sixteen dash sixty-one D of the Winslow Town Code titled General Site and Use Standards by deleting the strike-through language in the attached section. Beordained by Town Council of Town Winslow as follows, whereas the code enforcement officer in the planning board are proposing an amendment to chapter fourteen, article six, fourteen dash sixteen D to allow accessory structures when no principal structure is present. Now, therefore, beordained by Town Council, Town of Winslow Maine, that chapter fourteen, article six, fourteen dash sixty-one D of the Winslow Town Code titled General Site and Use Standards be amended by deleting the strike-through language in the attached section. Their motion and, moved and seconded, open for discussion.
You know, good, Mr. Chairman, just to make sure that I understand, what this would do currently to the general performance standards, you would not be allowed to put in any other accessory structure, gardening, servants, so forth, so on, until your principal structure was either built or under construction. So, what this would do is just remove that criteria that the principal structure is present or under construction. If I'm understanding that correctly.
That's my understanding, because you're only striking out that one sentence.
Right. So, that would mean if, if I had a property, we'll say, and I was, at some point in the future, was going to put in a principal structure or house, I could actually construct a shed or something on that, going through the building permit process and all that, before I had actually begun construction of the principal use. My, my opinion is, even this may have been the ordinance, but I don't know that we've enforced that in that manner, because.
Yeah, it's more of a clarification, trying to be consistent with what we're doing, so. I don't want somebody to point to it and.
Right.
I hope in the future that our code enforcement officer will be going through our ordinances and doing things like this.
Updating some language.
Updating some of the addresses and deleting some of the unnecessary. No, not the whole, piece by piece. Any further discussion? Are we all sat? Then we'll have a roll call vote.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yeah.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes, and being an ordinance, there will be a second reading and a public hearing, correct, next month? Same thing on ordinance sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Providing for amendment to chapter fourteen, article six, fourteen dash sixty-one F of the Winslow Town Code titled General Site and Use Standards by adding the underlined language and deleting the strike-through language in the attached section. Beordained by Town of Winslow, Town Council of Town Winslow as follows, whereas the town manager, code enforcement officer in the planning board are proposing an amendment to chapter fourteen, article six, fourteen dash sixty-one F to allow municipal principal structures on a parcel. Therefore, beordained by Town Council of Town of Winslow Maine, that chapter fourteen, article six, fourteen dash sixty-one F of the Winslow Town Code titled General Site and Use Standards be amended by adding the strike, by adding the underlined language and deleting the strike-through language in the attached section.
So, move.
Move and seconded, open for discussion.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
If I understand this correctly, if we change this or go to this, this means that as long as the land or the lot has sufficient frontage and acreage, a person could build two principal structures, three principal structures in, in any zone. Is that correct?
Yes.
Looking at our existing standards for our zone, the only one that, well, actually, the one that allows single and multifamily plus multi-structures is the mixed use. All the rest of them, high-density, low-density, and even the rule to a certain extent, specifically talks about single-family structures. And what my concern would be is that if we do this, that says that if a person in, in the rural zone, if I'm understanding this correctly, had eight acres with eight hundred feet of frontage hypothetically, they could build four structures, four principal structures on that one lot. Whereas now, they could not, because it only talks about single-family homes. Now, I might not be understanding this correctly.
It might be a, Mr. Chairman, it might be a limiting factor then, that's the driveway.
Okay.
So, driveway, private driveway can only service two residences.
Okay.
That's the limit.
The rest of the performance standards would have to be followed, so they would have to put the street in, they would have to practically, they would have to something like that. So, it prevents people from doing, you know, we've thought this over quite a bit. The rest of the standards in each given zone prevents people from doing, such as yours today.
So, was this to address, I'm, I'm trying to understand this too, but would this, there, someone has a single-family home, and that's the only structure allowed in some of these zones currently? And someone wants to build, for lack of a better term, a mother-law apartment, mother-in-law apartment, or their garage, or... So, you end up having two residences in a sense on that same lot. Is that what this is addressing?
Not really. It's, uh, it's more of the lots that have been allowed already have principal structures on them. We have houses with mobile home beside it, as long as they're law, just trying to be consistent with what we've been doing in the past. And I think the addition of the wording that they have to follow the rest of the standards is sufficient, you know, making so it works.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, the discussion we had previously about driveways would be covered, would supersede that, is correct? I believe the cross-reference that's in here is to that, is to that driveway, you're going, right. Whether it's a shed or. You have this common driveway that can share, that where it can have two residences on it. There has to be certain criteria to be considered. It, it does, because you, you also have to have a, you have to meet road frontage requirements for your lot. And if you're not going to be on an accepted city street, a town street, then it has to be some type of a road accepted by the town, and there is a process where you have a twenty-foot wide right-of-way. It's, it's surveyed, it's recorded in the registry, and it's been approved by the planning board. And that can allow you to have that second dwelling on a lot that would be big enough if it were actually, you know, had, had been divided, yeah.
The issue was it kind of covered every zone. It's a performance standard, it's a general performance standard for the whole town. And we've got lots of lots with more than one principal structure on it, be it two business, be it a strip mall, be it Raider Redemption, and residential health, they decided on the same lot. So, we're just trying to be consistent. There's also other lots with multiple, multifamily buildings on it. And according to our current wording, that's not supposed to be allowed. This will be in the future, nobody can look to that and say, you can't do that.
You know, good, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I'm having a little bit of trouble with this, because probably, my guess is, a lot of those structures that may not be conforming now were probably grandfathered and occurred over some period of time. That's my assumption. And what I'm concerned with is that we're gonna make this change to address those variances, when in turn, we, you know, we could be opening up a can of worms here, because I think that when we created the mixed use, that was when we really looked at certain areas of the town that could have single-family, multifamily in a single structure, and also multifamily with multiple structures. That's what the mixed-use zone was intended to do. And if we make this change, and of course, I understand the issue of the driveway, but let's just say that I'm in the rural district, and, and I'll use my example again. I've got eight acres, I've got eight hundred feet of frontage. According to this, I could build four principal use, principal structures on that one lot. Because you would be accessing not from a common driveway, but from the road. And I'm not sure that's what we intended to be doing, because that's a de facto subdivision. And it'll be all owned by one person, but sooner or later, that person's gonna want to sell something. So, are they gonna sell all four homes in my hypothetical example?
They would have to meet the dimensional requirements, so to tell.
Right, and, and, you know, that's what I'm using. In, in a rural zone, the lot has to be two acres and two hundred feet of road frontage. So, if I had eight acres and eight hundred feet of road frontage, I could build four principal structures on that one lot, if I'm understanding this correctly. And there would not be a common driveway, because I, I would be accessing it from the road itself. Whereas what we intentionally did in the mixed use is recognize that you can have multifamily and multiple structures under certain conditions, if, if you've got frontage. And, and I'm just afraid that we're opening this up, and we may end up with situations that is inconsistent with how we are describing these various zones throughout the town, like low-density, rural, mixed, uh, medium-density, so forth. So, that's my concern. Maybe I'm overly concerned, and it's not a problem, but it just seems like that we just opened up the door quite a bit here, and I'm not sure that we want to do that.
It seems like we discussed that, and there was something else that prevented something like that from happening.
Don't you have a subdivision at that point?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not if it's all on ownership. I'd have to check that, that very long definition of subdivision, which evolves from year to year. But with, when you have four structures, each of which has to meet the dimensional requirements of that zone, I think you may already have that, if the, I mean, if the council wants to table it, and I can look into the points you're raising, because, because if in fact it does, that would address your concern. If it do, if it doesn't, then you're, I certainly understand your concern.
I do believe that would create a subdivision, so they would be forced to split the lots, and what they did have.
I think we want to check into that, because if I own that one piece of land, and I'm, and this says I can put multiple structures, maybe located, erected, or moved, as long as all the structures adhere to the dimensional requirements of the zone in which it's located. I'm not selling the structures, I'm constructing the structures, and it's all under one ownership. So, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but, but, but I would like to make sure that we understand what we're doing here.
Yes.
I'd like to make an amendment to table this, until we can get some clarification.
I second that.
It's a motion, not an amendment.
I mean, a motion.
You move, you, you made the motion to amend this to table. Motion to table, and that's been seconded. Do we want to discuss the motion to table?
Yeah.
All in favor, do we have to roll call? Okay, we're gonna roll call the motion to table.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Jerry Kirian?
Yes.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes.
We have one last thing. We'll definitely look into that. There's also other places in the, in the ordinances that would be looked at as well, because the whole reason for us changing, requesting has changed, so we'll outline that as well.
Please, thank you.
And would you please, for our next meeting, to it says multiple principal structures, could you have a list of what a principal structure is? Is that, is that living quarters? I mean, is a garage a principal structure? Is a place of business? Is a place of business?
Part of the issues that I'm dealing with, because if you've got one lot and just a garage on it, maybe it's a business. If that's the only structure on it, that could be considered a principal structure on it.
I guess we wanted definition of principal structure.
One of the things that would help too, and, and I think you, you've got the list of all those, I'll, I'll call them non-conforming, but that's not the right term, but the ones that have more than one principal structure. And one of the things that would help, if, if we could get some idea as to when, when those were constructed, whether it's recent or whether this goes back years.
Okay.
Okay?
The most recent one is Raider Redemption, but I've got a list, I think that is the last one.
Okay.
I'll get that.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Do you have any more questions for me?
You don't want to stay till the end?
Steve?
Yes.
The next one, I'm losing myself, and I won't be able to take that.
Okay. Okay, it does not look like we have anything else here for holding for, correct?
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
So, now we will move on to order number eighteen, right? An order calling for a special election on March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, be it ordered by the Town Council of Town of Winslow as follows. Whereas the town clerk has determined there was a tie for the Town Council District Three. Oops, I'm sorry, we had an update. Order number eighteen, two thousand seventeen, an order calling for a special election in March thirteen, on March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, be it ordered by Town Council of Town of Winslow as follows, whereas there was a disputed ballot in the Town Council District Three seat, which if determined to be a vote for Lee Trahan, as indicated by the town clerk, necessitates a special election to resolve a tie. Now, therefore, whereas the school department is requesting a special election to be called to dissolve the AOS ninety-two, now, therefore, be it ordered by Town Council, a special election be called on March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen to dissolve the AOS ninety-two and decide the Town Council District Three seat, if there is a tie between Jerry Kirian and Lee Trahan. Okay, so, order number eighteen, two thousand seventeen is on the table for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend that order, and by striking out the whereas, this is a disputed ballot in the Town Council District Seat Three, da-da-da, and just leave the whereas, the school department is requesting a special election to dissolve AOS ninety-two, and if it is, if it doesn't seem a second, I'll speak to mine.
We did get a second. Oh, on the amendment, I'm sorry, yeah. So, you would like to strike through the first whereas, strike out the first whereas. Is there a second to this?
Right.
Move and seconded, do you strike the first whereas?
And, good, Mr. Chairman, my understanding that there is a legal proceeding that, that is beginning around this particular issue, and thanks to our town attorney, he updated us and said that it's not gonna go to spirit court, it's gonna go to a spring court, if they decide to hear it, if they don't.
they decide to hear it, if they don't decide to hear it, it goes back to Superior Court. Is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
I can update my email to you. I spoke with the Supreme Court this morning and sent a letter by overnight mail and should get a procedural order from the court within the next forty-eight hours directing the procedure by which the disputed ballot and the related election data will be sent to the State Supreme Court. And the court gives us the highest priority because we've got a matter that's in dispute and it's nothing more fundamental than voting. And we have a good chance of having that resolved in about thirty days. That was one of the questions I had, how long is this gonna take? And this is a very unusual situation, this is the first case of a rivalry at the municipal level. Years ago, disputed ballots were resolved at the municipal level, that statute was repealed, some other statutes were enacted.
So how long does it take to print the ballots?
We're gonna do it in-house.
But that's been thirty days?
Yeah, thirty days.
We have the absentee issue as well, it has to be a minimum thirty days, and it just works. So if we had the, I'll say, had the first reading of the election for District Three in January, we could still have the second reading in February.
But that wouldn't allow quite thirty days between then and when the next, and when that election will be called because there are twenty-eight days in February. It comes out a little short.
My concern is that since that is pending legal matter, I think putting in this resolution, you know, I don't know if there's any legal consequences, but it just seems like we have made a decision before we've got a decision. So that's what my concern is, and that's why I would move to strike that. And I understand the timing issue, but I also think that if...
Are you thinking that by putting it on the ballot or enforcing the justice decision, do you not?
Because you have to have two readings and the clerk then has to have thirty, minimum thirty days thereafter.
Once we have the decision.
Why is March thirteenth so important?
Because that's when the AOS thinks they'll be ready.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anything sacred about March thirteenth. We would like to have the vote early enough so that we can determine the direction that the AOS is going in time to set things in motion for dissolving the AOS, if that's the result, so that things will be in place to start July first, either continuing with the AOS or separated. And I think pushing it a few days, one way or the other, I don't think it's gonna make a whole lot of difference.
Because whoever has the seat, I obviously would longer input during budget, which normally starts much.
Yeah, too much.
And is Jerry still allowed to sit here and vote on behalf of District Three until...
Yes, until the decision is fully resolved, he's the seating member.
Right.
He'll run the beat at this point.
So, good Mr. Chairman, just to continue, is there anything absolute on March thirteenth? Could it be any time?
We could push it back.
We have the time, first April? Yeah.
If they were pushed back, say, two weeks, I think then we've got a very big chance of not having a time crunch that I was just describing.
And the time crunch you're talking about, that's hope that we get it done in that length of time. This would give us a little more time to make sure of taking that.
Oh yes, if you move the election, it's not a problem, and moving that election, say, two weeks later, I'm assuming March thirteenth is Tuesday there. From what I was told today, in the conversation that I had, I'm quite confident we will be able to have a decision and be able to have an election without being pushed on.
I suppose the other option would be a special meeting, an accounting meeting.
If necessary, that'd be...
We didn't wanna wait the second reading.
From what I just heard, and I'll say it as it seems reasonable, rather than March thirteenth, we could make it March twenty-seventh, which is two weeks later if that doesn't cause a problem in school issues.
And there's one person with their hand up, I'm gonna see if they have it. Go ahead, speak to your name, please.
Phil Searns, live on Smalley Island. Does anyone know when Basseboro or Waterville are voting? Because my understanding is if one of those towns votes to withdraw the AOS, we wouldn't even have to have a vote. Is that correct, Earl? Isn't that correct?
No, but we probably wanna see whether it is. We probably wanna get over it.
But it won't matter. In other words, if by law, I think, and Earl can correct me if I'm wrong, if Waterville or Basseboro votes yes to withdraw from the AOS, the AOS is done, no matter if we vote unanimously to stay in it, there is no more AOS.
I don't think that's quite correct. If one town votes to withdraw, that town can withdraw, and the remaining two towns would have to decide whether or not it's worthwhile.
So if Waterville and Basseboro voted no, then obviously, then no. So if they're voting ahead of us, we save some money not having an election. Correct?
I see that it's called that the election has to be done on the same day for all three towns. So that may negate what I said earlier. I would suggest that you check to a Thursday hearing to find out if that's true.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ray.
I guess, I guess I'd like to address one question to Mr. Kirian and Mr. Trahan is that, do you see, I know you wanna get this resolved probably just as soon as you can, would pushing the election two weeks ahead of time, would you be in favor of that or would you wanna get it resolved just as quick as you can?
Can't answer that. Only advice from my attorney.
It's possible, we may not have to move the election, yeah, but they want the AOS vote all three towns on the same day.
But even if we do postpone it here, we still can do the first reading and the second reading and the next meeting.
Yes. Or we could do the first reading tonight as written, and then at the second reading, delete that, the decision's been made, we could just delete the whereas, like, can I put it back in, see the one or the other, it doesn't matter.
We could amend it.
Commending you away to second reading.
We could leave it out now. Leave it out now. And if we do have a decision by January eighth, we could put it back.
Put it back in.
Which would not affect the timeline because...
That's the second reading.
That's the second reading.
As amended.
As amended.
With a public hearing, I assume.
And that would give us time to get to ballots.
So what we're discussing is moving the first whereas in order eighteen, that's the proposed amendment. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Trahan?
Mr. Trahan, I'm sorry.
Lee Trahan, I'm gonna hold on a straight in regards to this, to answer your raised question regarding my concern, I would just like to publicly say I'd like to keep it with the AOS vote, just to not have a separate election, just to save the money for taxpayers.
Yeah. We can have both on the same.
We're looking at that anyway, but we're not having a first reading on the first section of it until, so we do a first and second reading on that first part, next one.
So the proposed amendment to order number eighteen is to move the first whereas, and if needed, to reinsert that at the second reading. Is that a good way to put it?
Yes.
Okay, any more discussion on that amendment? We're all set? Let's have a roll call vote on the proposed amendment.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Steve Russell?
Yes.
So now, as amended, with the first whereas removed, it would be ordered by the Town Council of Town of Winslow as follows. Whereas the school department is requesting a special election to be called to dissolve the AOS, now therefore be it ordered. No mention of the special election until we hear from the boards.
Ken, we will still have that on March thirteenth?
The date has not changed, right? We're setting up a special election on the AOS for March thirteenth, and if necessary, we'll give you back the special election until you give it to the board. Simple, correct, incorrect. Any further discussion on order number eighteen? Will, at the next reading, you amend that date if it turns out that the thirteenth is not the day that all three districts are supposed to vote? With the subsequent special election that happens to be held on the new date?
You will raise that when you get to the question. Yeah. You know, I'm assuming that March thirteenth, it came from...
Yeah, well, it's superhanded.
Yeah.
And that must be a date he's doing all three votes.
So we wanna try to keep the March thirteenth date, that's the goal. And we wanna try to meet the deadline if we have to have a special election for District Three, to also have the second reading in place and done within the thirty days for the ballots. That's our goal. Are we all set? Is there any more discussion? Then we will have a roll call vote.
Ben Twitchell?
Yes.
Patricia West?
Yes.
Ray Karen?
Yes.
Jeff West?
Yes.
Ken Fletcher?
Yes.
Okay, we will now move on to resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and seventeen. Providing for a pawnbroker's license for James A. Smith, DBA, Jim's Gun Shop, forty-six Bay Street, be it ordered, be resolved by Town Council of Town of Winslow as follows. Town Council acting as municipal officers approve the issuance of a pawnbroker's license to James A. Smith, DBA, Jim's Gun Shop, forty-six Bay Street, Winslow, Maine. Move and second it, open for discussion. Seeing no discussion, we'll ask for a vote, is that a hand vote? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Pass. Moving on to resolution forty, two thousand and seventeen. Resolution providing for authorization of the town manager to sign a contract between the Town of Winslow and the Maine Public Employees Retirement System for the Public Works and the Fire Department employees, be it resolved by Town Council of Town of Winslow as follows. Whereas the Town Council wishes to join Maine P E R S effective July first, two thousand and eighteen, and offer special Plan Two C to its Fire Department employees and Plan A C to its Public Works employees. And whereas the Town Council excludes less than full-time employees from the plans, full-time is currently defined as eighty or more hours per two week paper. All non-full-time employees are excluded from the Maine P E R S participation, but they are currently covered under social security. And whereas the Town Council will allow employees to purchase services rendered prior to July first, two thousand and eighteen, the town will not participate in the purchase of the prior service. Employees are responsible for paying the full liability associated with this service. Now therefore, be resolved by Town Council of Town of Winslow that the town manager is hereby authorized to sign a contract between the Town of Winslow and the Maine Public Employees Retirement System for the Fire Department and the Public Works employees.
So move.
Second. Move and second it, open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Maine P E R S requires that we do the resolution before I can sign the contracts over itself.
Any further discussion? Are we all set? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign.
Through the chairman, can we take, just before the next resolution, can we take five minutes? Couple minutes.
A break.
Take a break. Yeah, take a break.
Yeah.
I need to, yeah.
No problem. No problem. Resolution number forty-one, two thousand and seventeen. A resolution providing for establishing a not-to-exceed budget amount of X for the school department's building and renovation project for the relocation of the junior high students from the junior high building, be it resolved by Town Council of Town of Winslow as follows. Whereas the school department has voted to close the junior high building, and whereas the voters rejected the school department proposed building and renovation project of ten point three two five million at the November two thousand and seventeen election. And whereas the Town Council wishes to provide some guidance to the school department by establishing a not-to-exceed budget amount for the building and renovation project. Now therefore, be it resolved by Town Council of Town of Winslow, that a not-to-exceed budget amount of X is hereby established for the school department's building and renovation project for the relocation of the junior, of the high schools, junior high school students from the junior high building. What is your pleasure?
So move.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second?
Move and second it, open for discussion.
You know, if good Mr. Chairman, this could be a relatively long process or it could be a relatively short process. My opinion is that most of us have a number in our head that's not ten point three because we know that was not approved, and we know that we're gonna have to spend some money. So it's not a question of no money, it's a question of what's the appropriate amount that we feel the voters of Winslow will accept and approve. One way we could do that is each of us take a sheet of paper, not have to sign it, put a number down, and then just list what those various amounts are. If we see that we've a horrendous spread, you know, three million to nine million, then we better order some pizzas, it's gonna be a long evening. If we find that we're kind of all clumped together, add a number, then that says that we're pretty much in agreement as to what that number will be. And then it's a question of, do we just average it, or do we find a number that we all can support, a consensus? Now, that's one way of doing it, it's not maybe the best way of doing it, but at least we could get a sense of where each of us are individually without going through a public debate.
See how close we are first.
Right, just get an idea how close we are. And it won't be binding, it is not like that that is the absolute, but just get a sense of how close we are.
I would like to ask two quick questions if we're gonna do it that way. Can we remove from this equation the demolition of the junior high? Can we just talk about the bricks and mortar for relocating?
If that's okay with me.
Is that all right with everybody? And then we'll deal with that at some point.
So when we take the, what, six hundred fifty or seven hundred fifty thousand, right out of the picture?
Right out of the two point, sorry, out of ten point three five, right, yep. So that's one request I would have, and the other one would be for these numbers to be quote-unquote honest.
Yes.
Because it wouldn't do much good for Ken to say, well, Steve's gonna vote high, so I'm going three, and it wouldn't do much good for me to say Ken's gonna go low, so I'm gonna go eleven.
That's right. This should be what you really believe is a number that the citizens of Winslow will support and is needed to do what we gotta do. So it's not a game.
Is everybody agreeable to that process? Go ahead, Ray.
You know, first time I hear it, so I'm kinda digesting it, the pros and cons of the proposal on my head. One of the pros is that we get to see where everybody is initially, and see how far we are about. But I really feel that, you know, it's an important enough decision that that's not how we should make decisions. I think we should, we need to have discussion, we need to have input on that decision-making process, and that is my opinion. I mean, I like, I don't mind going through the process, but I'm gonna, you know, I want...
To still discuss it.
To discuss it among the council members and among people out there, because how do we come to a decision of how we're going to be? Because how do we come to a decision of how we're going to be? And that, that's critical, I think, in the process. At the process where we've come to where we need to be. And so, I don't mind going through the exercise, it might be.
Shouldn't take very long.
Okay, but I think we need to have convincing, we need to go the pros and cons of the thing, there's a lot of complications to it. There's a lot of issues that, that revolve around that decision. And I don't mind going through this exercise, but.
Does anybody object to it?
I guess I don't. And I'm just assuming here, but I don't think Ken's intent was to not have a discussion.
No.
Just to kinda see where everybody is.
You know, that the point of this is that if we see that if we're really far apart, then we've gotta go through.
That's a different discussion then if we're really close.
Different discussion versus if we're all within a general range. Then we can be working with that general range and open up and have our discussions and everything around that. Versus somebody arguing in favor of a ten, and somebody arguing in favor of a four. So it's not to limit discussion, it's hopefully to get the discussion more relevant to where we are.
Yeah, Chris.
Is the goal to have all seven of us agree on an amendment?
I think the goal is for us to not have a divided vote when we send it to the ballot. For us to sorta come to an agreement. Doesn't have to be unanimous, but, um, you know, never has to be unanimous, everybody's entitled to.
Well, that's what I keep hearing, so that's why I'm asking, why, why is it so important that we're all?
I think it was, I think it's important that, that the council present to the voters, um, a unified, a unified number.
That the thought, Mr. Chairman, is for us to reach a consensus. And what a consensus is, is not necessarily something you're absolutely favor on, but it's something you can support.
Yes.
You know, I mean, it's, you know, each of us may have our opinions one way or the other and reasons thereof. But hopefully come to a number that is a consensus number, which means we can all support that number. Maybe we don't like it, but we can support it.
You have a comment or a question from the audience?
Jerry first, he was.
Yeah, uh, could we write it up on the board when we do this?
After we get these written down, yep, yep, we'll do that.
So that we can see all of them.
Yes, go ahead.
John Ferry, Jim Street, Winslow, I actually liked Ken's idea. But I, I just got thinking about if I was a voter, I might wanna know, especially the people that were elected to a district more than at large, uh, how my counselor, you know, what his opinion was on this subject, so. That'd be the only downfall I could see, I did like Ken's idea.
No, if it could, Mr. Chairman, of course, we're, we're all gonna vote at some point on whatever.
Number.
Whatever goes to the people to vote on. So that's when our position is known.
If I embrace an agreement, we'll write a number down, go ahead, Rick.
I have total respect for all the counselors in the process and stuff. I have not communicated with any of the counselors regarding my figure. So my figure is based on what I really feel. And I hope that all the counselors would do what they really feel is what the really true number is. And that's what, that's just what I wish, that, that would be the case, not on, based on, you know what I mean, is.
How big of a range are we looking to write down?
Well, we know it can't be ten point three-five, that's, that's what we're rejecting.
You know, that the idea would be is to pick a number. And not that that is cast in concrete, but it's just a number, a range. A range that we then see what happens with each of our individual thoughts.
So it's gotta be less than nine point six if we take that junior high out of it.
Right. Take the demo. Take out.
Yeah, take out the demo.
So it's gonna be less than nine point six.
Okay, are you ready? This is Lord Jack.
I, I, I don't know. I don't know, I don't.
Jeff, did you get the paper?
I don't know.
He's got it.
I got the paper.
Ray, that's not fair. He's trying to pad.
Fox, Ray, go ahead.
It's just that what I'm thinking, sitting here thinking, I'm going, okay, do I need to arbitrarily give my, am I really gonna put down what I really feel? Is knowing that maybe I'm on the higher end. Do I need to go even higher now to counteract other people that might be on the lower end? You know?
That's what we're trying to avoid.
And whether we, you know, whether people really, is this really what they truly feel, or, you know, I'll, I'll put down what I really feel. At least from here, from my perspective, that I'll be as honest as I can based on what I really feel.
I got a question on this.
Go ahead.
First of all, we don't know what a contractor's gonna, gonna charge for a figure. We don't know what we're building. Don't you think we better find out what we're gonna build first? What's available for the price?
Well, we're trying to give direction to the building committee as to an up. A hot, the, the, not to exceed.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, that's, we're trying to come up with a budget that all of us could vote in affirmative on to put on a ballot.
Well, if I remember right back, I wanna say four months ago, five months ago, uh, a figure was thrown out there, seven point five. Am I correct, or still three, or seven point three, or whatever it was?
What was that at that last meeting?
Seven point three.
Seven point three was their proposal, yes.
And what could we buy for seven point three?
That's what we're gonna charge the building committee with.
And what do we actually need? That's, that's the questions that should be answered before we start voting on that thing.
Oh, sorry.
Do you wanna put these on the board, or do you want me to, or? Go ahead.
Wait, can I just say something? In reverse to what Bill said, all of the, when we go back to the drawing board in the bowling committee briefing, all of those meetings are public and they're advertised, so you're more than welcome to attend to get all your questions answered and all the information out.
I think I asked Mr. Heaven if I could be on that building committee. I haven't heard.
Go ahead, Steve, if you wanna say some numbers.
The first one is seven point three million.
Okay.
The second one is six point two-five million. The third one is nine million. Seven point three million. This one has a range, seven-five to eight-five. So, I'm not sure, we could put down eight, I guess, seven point five to eight-five, put down eight. Eight point two-five and eight point three. So why don't we, what if we draw out the high and draw out the low, we see what we got? Draw out the, cross out the high and cross out the low.
The nine is two-five.
Just out of curiosity, see what that gives us.
So that two.
That's true.
I'm sorry. That's a two right here. So, pressure's, pressure's drawn up.
Sorry, hold on, this is a lot of pressure.
Millions watching.
I'm adding this up, right?
Three. Adding five by five.
Seven point eight-three. Three. Add the three, that's important. So that's just what we're supposed to agree with?
No.
Nope, that's our, that's our starting point.
That's a range that, that people would.
That's our starting point, what do you guys wanna put on the ballot?
You know, that, you know, good Mr. Chairman, I'm, you know, all, because we threw out the high and the low, so that's.
Wanna put them back in, see what that comes up looking like?
I think it's gonna be just about the same.
Well, same, yeah. One's way low, one's alive, yeah.
You know, that, that's not that far apart.
No.
It really isn't, no.
A high of eight-three and a low of seven-three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those million bucks, my friends.
It's just a million bucks. You know, the point is that, you know, that, that general number is just about seven point eight-three.
I think, and I think what we're doing is we're going, we're saying to the committee, hey, committee, let's do the best we can and work with this number. If you, if you can get it less, great, if you could, if you need any, any circumstances that says that you can't, you can't get a school system that's functional or hurts the kids, or might hurt the town of Winslow, come back to us and we'll look at it, I think it's a good, I, I have, I think it's a.
What's round enough to be?
Seven point eight-three.
I think, I think it's just something to start with, and I think it's something that they come back, we come back, we look at it, and, I mean, also, you know, I, as. I guess I'm looking at, I'm looking at if.
You've gotta remember.
I mean, I hate to open it up, but if anybody has any comments on that.
Just give us a couple more seconds before we open it up.
Yeah, okay, sure.
But, if you take seven point eight, let's say that's the mean, or whatever they would call it, the average. And you, if you added the six hundred and fifty thousand on top of that, I mean, seven point eight is, is, hmm, I don't know what I'm trying to get at. I could certainly support seven point eight-three, I don't know if everybody else can, and I think that's the question, what would you vote on? I'd like to see an eight, but.
I would add the six fifty back into that because we don't know for sure. So we could say up to that figure plus the six fifty, couldn't we? And then if that's not needed, then we could use.
And right now it's one point eight million different than it was before.
Right. And, you know, I think the voters would, would approve that number. That's my sense.
Seven point eight-three or seven point three plus six hundred and.
Well, yeah, that, yeah.
See, that's what it's giving you.
Well.
Making sure to add.
But the building committee has to be dealing, you know, I don't think the building committee ought to be dealing with six hundred and fifty thousand to take down the junior high, you know, that's, that's there, that's something we're gonna have to deal with. But as far as giving a realistic number to the building committee, to say, hey, what can we do for seven point eight-three, or seven point eight, then that's a number which would seem to be somewhat realistic. Which I think the voters of Winslow would probably approve if it was on the ballot.
Especially, especially if the council moved seven nothing to put it on the ballot.
That's right.
And this also would take the question out of there of doing, oh, what we're gonna do with the junior high. This gets the kids out of the junior high in, into somewhere.
Right.
To free the junior high.
Deal with that building later.
Exactly.
Go ahead, Rick.
Through the, through the chair, I think having the money for the demolition on the, on the initial ballot didn't help us out. Didn't help the cause if you wanted to approve it because it brought it over ten point, you know, ten point. It wasn't really voting on, and I think maybe some people didn't realize that we were voting, although it was pretty well spoken, that it was.
Any more comments up here, yes?
To keep this from increasing the tax base, uh, the mill rate, what would that figure have to be?
Well.
Ken figured last time was seven point three.
Yeah.
To keep the tax rate the same.
The real, you know, the real opportunity here is what savings we're gonna, enduring savings that we're gonna have through consolidation. And I think it's been said two or three times, I think Eric's even said, you know, about two hundred and seventy-five thousand is a pretty conservative number. Most likely, I thought I understood, was gonna be more than that. One of the things that would really help is that, that, you know, the school.
You know, that number down?
Yeah, and really commit to say, you know, we think a more realistic number is X. And that significantly helps the whole tax question. And, but of course, we can't dictate what that will be, and I don't think it's appropriate. But I think, based on everything I've heard, consolidating to a two-school system should have significant ongoing savings. And the enrollment's going down, so, you know, all of that fits together. But that's something that the school committee is gonna have to work on.
Any more comments up here, do we want some comments in the audience real quick? Anybody from the audience like to speak to this number we've come up with, seven point eight-three? Anybody from the school board?
Yeah, can we round that?
Anybody?
No, we're seven point eight. Even seven point five.
Seven point eight-five? Let's come up with a number we can all agree on.
I'm happy with eight because if you think about that extra two hundred something thousand is the food service issue that we're running into. That could address that, that issue, so.
Bringing that point up, since the food service is running in the deficit, if they can commit, if they're gonna erase the deficit and not have to transfer other funds in, that's all part of that savings. And then that in itself could be an offset that if they can reduce the deficit by improving the food service cafeteria arrangement, then that's additional savings that can be brought in.
So you should definitely have the funds to address that problem then by making it eight?
No. No.
You look at this, you look at this way, if it was eight, there would be three bit, three numbers came in above eight and three numbers came in below it. That has nothing to do with the average, but I'm just saying there were three people that wanted it more than eight, and there were three people that wanted it less than eight. Am I reading that right?
Four people for eight above, three people for less than.
Seven point three, six point two-five, and seven point three. That's three that wanted it less than eight, and there's three that wanted it more than eight, and there's one that wanted it eight. It's not an average, if they call that a mean, I don't know, I'm not a math major.
Mean.
Mean?
And one of the things is, is that that can always be brought up, if they need a little more, it's a good explanation.
If they decide seven point three isn't enough, they can come to say.
Or seven point five or eight.
Well, we can come up with a saving, or we can come up with, that, that's the way that ball games play.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where unfortunately, that's what, you know, we, it's given a direction, and until you hear from the building committee that comes back, then I think they need to go look at it now with the architect and see what that is, what, what that gets you, and whether that's an adequate, adequate, uh.
You won't know until.
We won't know until we get back together and we start looking at some of the options.
Um, the architect gives you his figures.
Yeah.
And what you can take out.
That's right, that's right. Go ahead.
Earl Watts, eleven Lucille Avenue, um, just wanna make sure that this, what, the figure that you're describing is not, it's a starting point. It is not what you're going to limit the building committee to. It's a aiming point for them to work towards and either come in there. If they need to come in above, they present it to you, and if they come in below, everybody stands up and cheers. Is that correct?
I think I would characterize it that whatever number we come up with is a number everybody up here would vote in the positive for, put it on the ballot. If that number is different, if the building committee can't work within that number, they wanna come to us and make the case and see if they can convince us to raise it an extra two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's, that's for a case for them to make. Am I saying that correctly?
The way the resolution.
It's not written stone, we will not devote, this isn't a vote to put this number on the ballot. This is a vote to have the building committee, it's a goal for them to meet.
So then, the resolution needs to be rewarded.
Right, the resolution I thought we were working on is establishing a not-to-exceed budget amount of X.
Yes.
Okay, and that's the way I still view this, in my mind.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Cause I'm hearing not to exceed, and I'm hearing a suggested aiming point.
Well, let's go with what it says in the resolution.
Says not to exceed in the.
Not to exceed. Now, is that clear?
I just heard from other people that if we come back with a, if the building committee comes back with a higher number, you'll consider it. Was that clear?
Do we wanna play word games, do we want to get on and get the work done?
I just wanna know that if, in good faith, people decide it's eight point one-two, they can come back and it'll be considered.
And we said we would consider it.
Okay.
But we do not wanna start playing raise the, raise the target before the work is even done.
No.
This is what the school committee asked us to do, to come back with a not-to-exceed number that we could all support.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the overage would be considered.
We always consider everything, it doesn't say we're gonna do it.
And I would also like to dispel the continuing declining enrollment because as has been presented tonight, enrollment numbers are increasing.
No, they aren't.
Yes, they are.
Yes, they are.
I just got the ten-one numbers, current enrollment, and it's down.
The ten-one, what is the ten-one, sir?
On April first, in ten-one of every school year, the school department submits to the state what the enrollment is. So, there are two points in time. That's not the purpose of what we're discussing, but I can supply that documentation to you if you want it.
Sir, I have the principal of the elementary school who's here tonight saying that his enrollment numbers are up. I agree, but there's anecdotal evidence that the enrollment numbers are up at the junior high as well.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's not talk about enrollment right now, let's tie them up with our numbers.
What's a, what's a, do we have an initial reading tonight, and then is it, uh, two readings?
Thank you.
It's one reading?
One read.
One reading.
Steve?
Go ahead.
I was at the workshop, which I thought was very productive, and my sense, maybe I'm wrong, was that that committee, those members of the school committee, they want, I'm not gonna call it a hard, hard number, but a pretty hard number to work with, they don't wanna go through with what they went through last time where they worked extremely hard by all accounts, came up with a number, and the number didn't pass muster with the voters. They want some guidance from this council, and I think my sense, from Ron Mary at least, was he wants a pretty high number. I mean, and, am I wrong? You guys were there, most of you, is that, is that your sense of the meeting?
Chad Bell, principal of high school, live on Smiley Ave. Um, Phil, I think you're right, but I think at that meeting it was also discussed that it would be a starting point, and then negotiations going back and forth. You guys change your mind now, that's fine, you have every right to do that, but that is what was discussed with that meeting. Yes, we do need a target, but then if that starts the negotiation period.
Is it gonna go down from that number? I mean, does anybody think that's the starting point, it's gonna go down? I mean, you get that thing over eight, you're gonna have a hard time passing it again. I mean, it's, if you had the interest in where we're at then, we're open that again. I mean, jeez.
Go ahead.
John Ferry, Sixth Gym Street, what's up? Uh, I think that part of the problem is communicating to the public, and I think Mrs. West's idea of rounding it off to eight would make it very easy to communicate. Eight million dollars, bang.
Thank you. Go ahead.
The numbers that are up there on the board, seven point two, seven point three, in my own view, is that, that again is the ten million, what was ten million, three hundred thousand, that effectively eliminated in the referendum, the PAC, that's what they were going at, no question. And it's still, the seven point three, the seven point twos, and even the six point two, or whatever, they don't want that, they didn't want it. Now, some probably voted against it because they prefer the standalone, uh, six, seven, eight addition to the elementary school. Some favor sending them over to the high school, seven eighth graders and seven, six grade students. But I don't think that seven point nine, or whatever that figure is, I think that at a minimum, that, that is too low. And this town can afford more, and I would at least like to see an initial figure of eighty-three, eighty-four, eight, eight point three, eight point four, or eight point five in that vicinity, if, if this is the exercise we're going to come up with. Not under eight.
If we add that junior high thing in, it's up to eight point four with a seven point eight figure.
But we aren't gonna send that demolition to the building committee, the building committee is looking at a number to build with.
Well, what I'm saying is, is what we're looking at, spending, all right, 'cause that six point five is there to just, to tear down the junior high, that's what we're looking at. And by going to seven point eight, that does not include the junior high.
Exactly, we're not talking-
So, I know, so you take the seven point eight, add the six point five, you're already at eight point four instead of the ten point three.
But that's not eight point four in new bricks and mortars, that's, that's not point.
Seven point eight is new brick and mortar.
What do we want for bricks and mortars?
Right.
Okay, so, to try to move this a little bit, I'll make the first proposal, and I'll say that, um, I'm gonna ask, can we all agree on eight million dollars? As a down figure.
Nope.
So, let me vote.
I could, but-
So, then we vote to see who can deal with the eight and who can't.
I think, I think if, you, you have a resolution, if one of us feels it should be eight point three, then we could amend the resolution, vote on amendments to the resolution, and then go back to the original figure of seven point, seven point nine. Or what we could do, what I'm hearing what they're doing is saying, as the town council provides some guidance, school department by establishing not-to-exceed budget for the building renovations project, unless approved, unless changes, uh, any future changes must be approved by the town council. That would, if they came up with a little, some more money, then we could amend it. But now, we couldn't amend the seven point, so, that's final, that's in cast and stone. And I think, you know, I think if we said, we made an amendment to it, the renovation project for, you know, establish, unless approved by the, by the town council again, for any added, added that might come up, we're giving them a guideline of seven point, seven point eight three. So, we're giving them that guideline, but we leave at least some room where, you know, we're going back knowing that we don't know what we might find there, and what we can is say, hey, we're pretty established at the seven point eight three right now. By giving them an amendment to it, saying unless approved by the town, any increase needs to be approved and justified by the town council.
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, the resolution, you can amend it.
Okay, so, 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 yeah, so.
So, let's work on this figure for a minute, Ken, um, the savings. Uh, let's say the conservative number they gave us was two hundred and fifty or two hundred and-
Two hundred and seventy-five.
Something like that. Let's, let's, let's still be conservative, say it's three hundred thousand, let's round it, what, what does that buy for bond money? Do you all have the headless guess, six million?
No. Maybe five.
Five, okay.
You know, I'd have to run it.
But, uh, it's an episode.
Yeah, the ten, the ten point three was a debt service of six eighty a year. Okay, so, half of that, three forty would be approximately five.
How much would it be for seven point eight? Approximate?
About five something, five hundred something.
Okay, so, we've gotta come up with a number, so it's a sly, anybody else have a suggestion? I came up with eight.
I'm comfortable with eight.
Seven point eight?
You know, goodness, Chairman, I think Ray's idea of saying, you know, we can amend this resolution to say, this is the budget, the not-to-exceed budget, but of course, the council will consider other amounts and approve it at that time.
Yes, I believe that, yes.
And then, and then that way, there's a place to start and we can go from there.
They try to best to stay under the seven point three, and if they can't, they can make their case.
Right, yeah. Come back and we'll have to understand it and look at savings and a whole group of things just to see how, because, because what's not, what the voters won't, won't want is a property taxes clause.
Exactly.
Right? So, the better job that we do in describing those savings with consolidation that mitigates
A lot of things, yeah.
That, that will help, and you can maybe spend more money if you get some savings.
And we know it's seven point three, the taxes won't go up.
We can probably sneak it.
Yeah.
Depending on fifteen other variables.
Oh, no, that's true, but this is what we had looked at before.
Right. Make it.
Go ahead, Ray.
I, I think if you're talking seven point eight three and eight million dollars, we're really close to what we really feel we should be. And knowing that we can, you know, if somebody came back and had really justification for whatever, we know what the figure eight point three is what we really want, we want everybody to work through that and get to that point if we can. If we can't, and then, but you need the building committee and the educators to do what they can with the architect, and what we can do, let's see where, and then, we'll see where the, where the, where everything lies, and then at that point in time, you know, we had, the, the school committee asked us to give them a figure, and we wanted to give them a figure, because if we would've, we wouldn't probably be here at this point in time. We could've had some constructive back and forth and come up with something. Initial phase is this seven point eight three, let's, you know, we're, we're talking eight or seven point, doesn't matter at this point. Let's just bring it back, see what that gets, and then we'll come back and we'll, we'll go through that process again.
I make a motion to amend the resolution.
Second.
Wait, can I say it?
Did you do what you said?
So, I can say whatever I want now?
Yeah.
Um, to add that the school building committee can come back to us and come in with a, a better figure, or a different figure than what we have said here.
We will consider other figures.
Right. If they can do that anyway.
They could do that anyway.
They could do that anyway, it's semantics, so.
I just like it written down.
Yeah. So, it's been moved that this amendment, this-
Hey, let me try that again, second.
Thanks.
So, the motion on the floor is to amend the resolution. And I don't know what we would add for a line here, how we would do that, um, the wording would be that, this is a suggested number?
Well, no, the resolution is adding that clause.
Yes.
Adding that clause.
Yes, to say that-
I mean, the amendment is adding that clause.
Right.
Which says that the council will consider other, uh, a-
Other figures.
Other figures and have the right of approval of that number, or whatever. Correct?
Yeah.
Any discussion on that motion, on that amendment?
Yes.
What?
A justifiable figure.
Of course.
They would have to justify it before someone was to go for it, yep. Do we need to- Sure hands for that, okay, all in favor of the amendment as, uh, for the amendment? All opposing, same sign. Okay, so now it's been amended. Okay, so now we have to come up with a number to put in the blank, not to exceed, seven point eight three, is that what we're gonna agree on?
Yeah, that's what I would-
That's what I would-
Okay, is that a motion on the floor?
So, move.
Moved and seconded, any discussion on the seven point eight three? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Both same sign. That was unanimous, yes, seven point eight three. Okay, so, now, that ends our regular business, we move on to discussion. Do we wanna start with the school board's budget first? Do you wanna, using your questions, Ken, that you had?
Yeah, um, yeah, I just wrote up some questions that the idea would be that if the council agrees, we could submit these to the school board and have those, um, written responses. And I can go down sooner to six, but I think they're pretty straightforward.
So, if the council are all in favor, I'll send this on to the school board.
You have a problem with them, Ray?
No, not at all.
Okay, so, so we will submit these questions as a council to the school board, so, is that the idea? It sounds like if there was no objections, you can move to submitting. Okay, another item we had on for, for discussion is the police association range. And Ken, you'd had some discussions with the chairman a couple years ago, and I did too, when I was up like in signatures install, and it happened to be that that day, they were using the range. And so, there's no question that in this person's house, it was automatically, you can hear, it wasn't, it wasn't his imagination.
Right, and, you know, I think the issue isn't just the fact that there's a range, but of course, in my understanding, you know, that there is a prescribed number of shots you have to take and all this type of stuff. So, it's not just when I was shooting and you think, bam. You know, there is a routine and a regimen, you have to go, and it involves quite a bit of ammunition. So, I think, you know, I think that, I think it was maybe you, Mike, that brought it up, or maybe Steve brought it up, that the idea, is there a better place in town for that range? And, and the idea might be is the town forest. I have looked at that, and we have to do the research.
But we got five hundred acres, so it seems like there might be a more, a spot that's more remote. That might not be, we may not find anything, but-
And of course, the range isn't a town property anymore, it's by, by police-
Association owns a lot.
Police association owns a lot, so they would have to be agreeable, anything we do with the swamp or something. So, I guess that maybe if we have a lot of extra free time.
Yeah, I see, it's not, I don't think it's, I'm gonna be on the front burner now. I think that their night training is done, deer season is over, so those injections, they don't seem to eject during the regular hours of the day when they're at work, if they go to, for training exercises, it was special circumstance at different times of the year. Yeah, go ahead, Ray.
You know, when I've been out there, don't they, on the stump dump, where they put the stumps, don't they have like a semi-range there already that they, that they use for target practice?
Who's stump dump? Stump dump?
Well, they, I know that used to be, when I went out, when I go out there and I, you know, went out there a couple years ago, there was places where we dumped, where in the past, a lot of stumps were dumped, you know what I mean? So, that's a kind of thing. I don't know, maybe it's just time, but I thought they, I saw a lot of shells around, I know that there's places where they're firing on town land right now.
Where was this stump dump?
It was in town land on the Albion, Winslow Town Line. There's like, that's where all this, five hundreds, like more than that, five hundred acres that is out there, that what they had did is they had carved into a hill there, somebody had taken some gravel or some sand out. So, there was this huge hill, and then people were firing into the hill. Oh, big time, big for-
Was already arranged there, so?
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that I know that a lot of locals
Were, were target practice.
Go there for shooting. But, I don't, I, maybe it hasn't been for, was, I'm telling you, it was fifteen years when I went up there last time, I didn't even have a gun, I was just-
Well, as Ken says, I don't think this needs to be on the front burner, but I think it's something to investigate in the future.
Yeah, just to see if we can find an area that-
Isn't a swamp and, and could be developed into a range and on other town property that-
It's on the left, as you're going to the Albion, it's the left-hand side, it's on the left-hand side, not the right-hand side, the swamp. As you get, you get five hundred yards in there, and that's swamp on the right-hand side, except by the power line, of course. And the rest of it's pretty well-
Right.
History from-
Stump dump's on the left.
On the left, yes, that's true.
I didn't realize that.
Well, some, somebody dumped a lot of stumps, like thousands of them, maybe. Don't ask me what I was doing there in like two days' years, please. Yeah, really, jeez, I'm- Is that still running? Yeah.
Any further discussion, anybody else wanna discuss anything else? Go ahead.
So, I just wanna gi- give some good PR to the association. They raised, uh, over a thousand dollars to shop for Christmas gifts for needy families. I went shopping with them today, it was really fun. Um, and then we wrapped everything, we had-
Are you talking about the police association?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We, um, we wrapped all the gifts, and we had a lot of people donate gifts, donate like quilts and books and Barbies and everything, we wrapped all of that, so, I just wanna give them some good PR, 'cause they did a lot of work today, and we all wrapped in the room downstairs, and it was really nice, so.
Good job.
We done?
We done? Move to a judge?
Second.
Hey, Chad.